Good evening. This is the February 27, 2019, meeting of the zoning board of appeals for the town of Newcastle. Is the secretary?
First case is Colombo.
Good evening. My name is Peter Cole on The Architect. You hope Colombo?
Hi.
I have some photographs here. The board won't take a look through them while we're going through it. They'd like to build an extension above an existing attached garage to their house on Blin Terrace. The house was built back in 1970, when there was a different front yard setback requirement. So the house is an existing nonconforming structure. There'd be no additional footprint. They just want to build up above the garage space. The house is located where it is also for another reason. There's a fairly large wetlands area at the rear of the property. So they really couldn't have moved the house any further back than the property. The, I can give you some of the specific numbers. Right now, it's 54 feet from the front yard where a 60-foot setback was required. The street actually curves, so that's really only at its closest point on the corner. Setback will get better as you move across. Please sit for you.
So there's no expansion beyond the current dimensions of the house?
No, no change in the footprint. It's just going up.
Right, okay.
And legal, legal pre-existing non?
Correct.
Sorry, anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to this application? No.
There's nothing in your application about sprinklers? Are you under the sprinkler requirement?
We make it under, yes.
You make it under?
Yes. We're like 25 percent.
I guess because you're a good architect, you would figure that.
That he is.
It's actually good law.
No, I'm all for it. I'm not going to be flippant about it, but it's really good. In the long run, we should all have it.
Anything else? Board? I move to close public hearing.
I'll second.
All is fair to say aye?
Aye.
I'll make a motion. I move at the Colombo application for a six-foot front yard variance for the construction of a second story be approved with the following reasons. This is a pre-existing non-conforming site structure. There will be no undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. This will permit the owner's enjoyment of the expansion. Benefit cannot be sought through other means. The variance is not substantial. There will be no adverse impact on the physical environment. And because of the change in zoning laws over time, this is not a self-created hardship. You'll have six months to start, and there are no neighbors in opposition. You'll have six months to start, one year to complete. Is there anything that you need to add? For those reasons, I think we should approve this application.
I'll second.
All is fair to say aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Happy marriage.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Reed?
Hello. Good evening. My name is Mike Reed. I live at Nine Castle Road, and I'm making an application for a variance so that we can install a full-house natural gas generator. My house is from 1899, which I think is old, but I'm looking behind you and I see that Newcastle's from 1791, so maybe it's not old for what you see. But I don't think probably the house could be built the way it is if it were built today. If you look at the survey, you'll see that there, my house, my property is basically 80 feet in length, and under the setbacks, I need to be 40 feet from each, from the front yard to put in a generator. So I learned through this process that I have two front yards, apparently. My backyard is my front yard because there's a street orchard lane behind my house, and so I need to be 40 feet from essentially both the front and the back, and the property is about 80 feet. So there's really no place to put the generator unless I put it on the lawn, essentially. If I put it on either side of the house, it would be either under windows or basically on top of my cellar door. So what we're proposing to do is to just push it forward a bit towards the front of the house. It's going to be behind a bush, so you can't see it from the front of the property. And there are bushes on the side also, so you won't be able to see it from the side of the property. I told, I sent around the letter that I was supposed to to my neighbors, and nobody objected. I spoke with almost all of them. They were happy that this was going in because they know they can get power for me if they need. And so unless you have any questions, I'd just ask that you approve the application.
One question. This is the one that we had a problem with the coverage. Has that been resolved?
We got it resolved. The applicant did not measure correctly his driveways, so he had overstated what he had existing. So when that was re-corrected, I went to the site and did evaluation. It changed the numbers, so he is conforming.
The building department is happy with that?
I am, yes.
Okay. One other thing. Number six on your application, you said your proposed coverage was going to be 1679. It's supposed to be 1697. That's a common error. You just inverted a couple of numbers.
Okay.
I'll give this to our secretary, and she'll straighten it out on the forms.
Thank you.
Okay.
Great.
Can you explain to me again why there's not sufficient amount of room on the other side of the house, either to the right or the left of the cellar door opening?
Let's see. Let me look at that picture. So if it has to be at 40 feet under the setbacks, you know, that's basically one point, and that puts us essentially under the windows or on top of that door. And so I'd need a variance no matter what. You see on the left side of that cellar door, there are those windows. And then the pictures aren't great, but towards the right of the cellar door, I've got those air conditioning units.
I'm not, so to the left of the cellar door, as you said, under the windows, is that within the setbacks?
No. So there's only essentially one place that is within the setbacks. I put it on that side because it's in 80 feet, and I've got to do 40 and 40, so that puts it...
80 feet from the front, you said.
40 feet from the front, and then 40 feet from the back also. And the whole, the whole property is about 80 feet.
I think Harvey was just trying to understand, where is the midpoint as it relates to that side of the house?
Oh, I think it's, I don't, I don't have the exact measurement, but it's approximately, you know, where those windows are, and the generator can't be too close to those windows because of the gas.
Harvey, also, is it special air conditioning unit on the left side of the house?
Yeah, no, I know the AC, you can't go where the AC is. But I was just wondering, you know...
Why couldn't you put it behind the porch on the right side of the house?
So which picture are you looking at?
I'm looking at your survey.
Yeah. Let me pull that up. Let's see.
Your porch wraps around the house, and it's right behind the door.
Oh, right here? Let's see. Well, that also would be not conforming because it would be...
Too close to his backyard.
Too close, and there, windows there also.
Well, the windows only, doesn't mean you can't put it here. This has to be a certain distance from the house.
Right, that's, that's true. So I'd have to push it out essentially onto our patio. And yeah, that would mess up our seating area, and it wouldn't change anything from my neighbor's point of view because they still wouldn't be able to see it either from their house or from the street.
The location you've chosen, is this on the concrete walkway?
No, it's not. It is, and that walkway, that's what the survey has, but this survey isn't 100% right. This is from a long time ago.
Yeah, they get them right sometimes. Other times, they don't, so...
Okay, yeah. So you've seen a lot of these, I'm sure. And that, I mean, there isn't a concrete walkway. There are these, like, stone, you know, squares.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's looking more like a...
And so the, and the squares, it will not be on those squares. Right next to the porch, in between that and what this indicates as the concrete walkway, there's just this gravel area where there's nothing right now. And so it would just be on the gravel, and the gravel would be right behind that bush that you can see in one of the pictures. I brought the Google Maps if you're interested. It basically replicates what I have in my application, but if you see here, it's just, there's a bush here, and then there used to be this concrete path that you can see on the survey. It sort of went up the property.
Right.
That doesn't exist anymore over there.
I see.
And so behind the bush, there's just this gravel over there, and then there are these big bushes, so Jack over there won't be able to see it. And you won't see it from the street because it's going to be behind the bush.
And that bush keeps, it leaves 12 months a year?
Yeah, it's there now, so, yeah.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak to this application? No.
How are you going to power it?
It's going to be natural gas, and so we have natural gas power in the house. And then there's, the hookup is over here, and then they're just going to run through a pipe under there, is my understanding. You know, there's that space.
They moved it outside of the house, but they're going to run it under, underground?
I don't know if it's going to be underground. There's this space here, so if you see this, I don't know what you, this lattice work, I guess, it's just empty under there. So I think it's going to go under there, but I don't know the answer to that. I hope they wouldn't put it underground. It seems like it'd be a lot more expensive and necessary.
And the code will probably dictate where you can, kind of can't put it.
Yeah, that would make sense.
And your electric panel is where?
The electric panel is going to, I'm not sure.
Where is, where do you, where do you get your electricity now?
Oh, the electricity would be on the other side, and so the hookup is there.
On the other side also. So there must be, that's where the meter is?
Yeah.
And the pan, there's a panel that has your fuses and this and that?
The fuse box is in the basement.
It's in the basement?
Yeah, yeah. And there's some line in the basement. We had our contractor come and look, and he called Con Ed about needing to expand the gas line because that's apparently what you need to do to get this generator in. They checked off that box. If they hadn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be here today.
Yeah, so that, that Con Ed is okay with expanding it?
Yeah, they're okay with expanding the amount of gas that we're going to get. There's going to be some other stuff to do with Con Ed, is my understanding. They need to come and, like, turn off the gas in front of the house and do other things.
May have to put in a new meter and also...
Yeah, yeah, they're going to do that. They said they were going to do that.
All right, you've got a lot of work.
Well, I'm not going to be doing it, so that's the good news.
22 kilowatts is fairly large. It's going to do everything in the house.
Yeah. I mean, our house is not even 2,000 square feet, and so it's going to cover everything, which is, which is great. That was, that's the idea.
Maybe it's going to, it uses more energy, and, you know, if you feel you need something that big, something smaller might work, too.
Yeah, I, I'm no expert. This is what the contractor said made sense, and so you very well could be right. But I imagine the sizes of the generators wouldn't be too different regardless of the...
The size, but the, the noise might be different, no?
They're all about 66 decibels.
They're all the same.
Yeah, it's the same motor running, all of them. They're just output is less. You can get 16 kilowatts, 18, 20, 22.
Yeah.
The 22s are the most efficient because they have load shedding, and they will run on half-power as opposed to running on full power and be more, or less economical. It's probably better to have the more, the larger kilowatts than the smaller ones.
All right, sounds like you've done your homework.
Thank you. Try it.
Any other comments by the board? Questions?
Nope.
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All is fair to say aye?
Aye.
Would you like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion at the application of Michael Reed for the installation of a...
Wait. I think somebody is here to talk.
Oh, I'm sorry, did you? I thought you had said...
No, we said not, we don't have anything to say about this.
Oh, okay. I just, you hadn't asked.
No, no, I did ask, and I, and he had put his hand up. That's okay. No problem.
Continue, aye?
When you said close the public hearing, I thought the evening was done.
Oh, no, no.
Okay.
Just for this application.
Yeah, no, you're good.
They make us stay to the very end.
I'll make the motion, application of Michael Reed for a standby generator requiring a 15-foot front yard variance be approved for the following reasons. This is a legally existing non-conforming situation on a lot that has two front yards, both requiring 40-foot setbacks, and it's only an 80-foot lot. So there's absolutely no place that can be used to facilitate this application without variance. The granting of a variance will not create an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. There's no other method to, that is available to achieve the desired end. This is not a substantial variance in this particular instance because of the situation of being legally nonconforming in the size of the property and the current codes. There will be no adverse effect on the environment. This is not a self-created hardship in that the property is a long time existing, and the code has been changed through the years, creating the situation. And all we will need is a final survey as to the location of your generator when you're done. You have six months to start and one year to finish, and in that case, you should grant.
A second. All is fair to say aye?
Aye.
Please. Thank you. Happy marriage.
Great, thanks so much.
Good luck.
Thank you. Thanks for your help.
Bondur?
Hi. My name is Laura Bondur. I live at 82 Shingle House Road in Millwood. And we have submitted an application for a variance for a chicken coop that we would like to put in what is like the backyard because it's behind our house, but it's actually considered front yard by town code because it's, it's on Shingle House Road. But it is, like, the way our house is situated on our property, it's behind the house. And we had selected that location because even though we have a large property, there's very little area close to the house that's flat where we could put the coop and the run so that the chickens would be close enough to the house that we'd feel safe that they wouldn't be off in the woods getting eaten by coyotes, and so that we can kind of keep an eye on it. And so this was the, the location that we thought would be the best in terms of access to the chickens and for their safety. And it is actually behind a rock ledge, so there's, you can't see it from Shingle House Road because there's a big ledge on the border of our property.
So not even the crest of the...
There's like a little tiny corner that you can see.
I see.
Yeah, I submitted some pictures that you can kind of see a little corner.
Okay. Do you know how many chickens they're going to have?
Up to 12. We'd start off very, just with a few and see how it goes.
What's the capacity of the coop?
The capacity, according to the manufacturer, was, I think they said, I think they said 15 to 18, but we wouldn't, we don't feel that that's humane to the chickens, that they'd be too crowded and that, so. And we know that by town code, we'd only be allowed to have up to 12. That would be our absolute limit, but we'd probably do fewer than that.
So the coop is within the run?
Yeah, it's a coop, there's a coop, and then we would have all coming out from this door here is the run, which would, is in this picture here. So it's attached to the coop, and then we'd put all the predator-proofing around the base of the run so that they'd be fully contained.
So no predators can get in?
That would be the hope.
We've done these, you chicken coop applications in the past, and we've always limited to hens only, no roosters.
Oh, absolutely.
Are you okay with that?
Oh, yes, yeah. We, we wouldn't want roosters.
Also, there's a, there's like a play yard there with swing and slide stuff. Is that going to remain, or is that near where your coop is? I'm not sure.
It's, it's near where the coop would be. It's kind of like right next to it. The play, the play structure would remain.
And the coop would be from the road to the left of that?
It would be, it would be in between the house and the play equipment.
Yeah, to the left, so behind, behind that, no, okay. You're not going to take the play yard down or anything?
Um, no.
Okay. Just want, I'm trying to get in my mind the location of, as to where this is on Shingle House, so that clears it up. Thank you.
What is the closest neighbor on the other side of Shingle House?
On which side? The, this side.
Crossing Shingle House?
Oh, across the street, it's the aqueduct, so there's, there are no houses there.
Nothing on the other side?
Nothing on the other side.
Where's the closest neighbor?
Um, we have our neighbors. They're on, they're on one side. They're on like the, the front side of the house, so the house would be between them and the coop. And then the neighbors on the other side, they're way, way back. You can't even see their house from our house.
Okay. Is there electricity in this?
Um, we will put electricity in, yeah, for, just for heat. Like, I would assume, we haven't gotten that far yet. That's why we don't even plan, we want to get settled before the winter. But I think it could be done with an extension cord, just to get like a heated roost and, and a heater for the water so that it doesn't freeze. What's that?
You'd like to be heard?
Hi, Laura. Laura, this is my wife Martha.
Hi.
My name's Bruce Ferguson, and we're the immediate neighbor to these guys on south of them. So they're at 82, I'm at 90. The next house is 100. First of all, I want to say that they do an awful lot of, of things and activities for their kids, and I suspect that this chicken coop is kind of oriented towards your, your kids and everything, correct?
Um, partially. I wanted them.
Okay. Anyway, it's a 25-year school administrator over in Mount Pleasant. You know, I kind of thought I could see where she was going with this. The concern I have is that, you know, the chickens are going to draw predators. I'm, I'm not sure how predator-proof your, your thing would be and if it works, and thank you for not doing any roosters.
Oh.
I really thank that because that, those things are unbelievable. We have a small dog, he's about 40 pounds, that is on electric fence, so our guy kind of runs free. Her dogs are in a enclosure, fenced in an enclosure. And I guess the thing I worry about is, not this past week, but the week before, before I had left the country for 10 days, on two different occasions, I saw a really healthy red fox just kind of walk down your driveway, like, not looking over his shoulder, any kind of concern or anything whatsoever. Just stopped, scratched a little bit, and wasn't concerned about anything. My wife, when was that, the other day?
Last Tuesday.
Last Tuesday, looking at our kitchen window, goes back into Con Ed. Incidentally, the Con Ed substation back there also has, I don't know how many acres of woodlands behind them. The only thing that polices the wildlife in that area is the Taconic Parkway. So we've seen coyotes like everybody has in town. Last year, there was a reported and confirmed bear sighting on Shingle House Road that was called into the police. So we have these predators. Last Tuesday, Martha took a picture of an animal larger than a coyote, and he's probably about the size of your biggest dog. Charcoal gray thing that was from here to the desk out, out there.
From, from me to you guys.
What?
Over 100 pounds. It was a wolf.
You want to see the distance?
Not, not size.
Oh, not the size.
The distance.
No, 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 this is, my, my kitchen door.
So I guess my concern is, is that there are predators out there, and I would hate to have us bring in additional appetizers for those predators that, you know, might, you know, wreak havoc on, on... The other thing is, if anybody did get into your chicken coop and killed your birds, you know, how do you explain that to your kids in the next morning when you find them? That's a tough one.
And we're, we're not here to say...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
We want to hear you, but you need to come up and speak into the microphone, please.
You want to come up?
No, come on.
No, no, you finish. I'm just, go ahead.
So that's, I'm, it's the predator piece for me. And if it brings additional higher-level predators, you know, what's the danger for my dog and, you know, our property and that sort of thing? So that's all.
So what is your suggestion to...
What is my suggestion?
Well, we're always, we're always trying to take into account, you know, how our neighbors feel about various renovations, additions, and so forth.
I have no concerns about, about chickens, per se. I grew up across the street from a farm, so I'm, I'm fine with all that part. It's the predator piece for me.
So it sounds like it's an all or nothing for, for you, and I'm just trying to characterize it.
I just, I just want Laura to be aware of what, what kind of animals are out there. Bears?
The point I was trying to make was that the only reason we're here now is because she's asking to place the chicken coop in a, in a place that requires approval from us. She could put the chicken coop somewhere else and not require, and it wouldn't require a zoning board approval.
Mm-hmm.
And it would be probably further away on the property and more susceptible to...
And she has a very heavily wooded property, too.
I think closer to Shingle House Road is probably a better location considering the likelihood of, I mean, they're not going to come hop up from the road and, you know, so you've cut out really, I don't know. I hear them in my backyard at night.
Yeah.
And it's frightening.
They're pretty brazen.
I'm told that that's the mating call or whatever. But I...
Let us ask you, is there another location in your estimation? I know it's an imperfect science, but is there another location in your estimation that makes more sense?
I, I know Laura's property extremely well because our neighbors, before she bought the place, we were close friends, so we were over there all the time. Is, are you, are you looking to put this chicken coop up behind the poolhouse where that other shed is? It's going to be down where there used to be a garden down there, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Because we were talking while you were presenting, and my, my picture was that you were going to put it behind the poolhouse. Poolhouse is kind of up on, on a ledge, and it's kind of a plateau, and then, you know, the topography goes up again. And there's a second utility shed up there. That's what kind of where I thought you were going with that.
Did you see the picture of the, and she has one, maybe she'll share it with you?
I don't even know where it is.
I know where it is.
That was the...
Yeah, that's Shingle House Road there, right?
Yeah.
And your jungle, that's the foot of your jungle gym. So you're going to put it right there?
Yeah, it's like right in here.
Oh, where the chow is?
Yeah, like right next to it.
All right.
There may be the best...
Again, I just hope you, you think through the whole predator piece. If anything ever got in there, and I've had two kids myself, and I was thinking about, you know, if something happened, how would I tell them? You know?
Oh, I, yeah, I mean, we definitely, we definitely think of that. I mean, one of my kids from school is at a farm, and they deal with this, like, he's very much aware of nature and predators and, and that things happen and...
Can I make a suggestion? Maybe a motion-detecting light or a, that would come on automatically if someone went near the pen, even maybe with some sort of screeching device that would scare away a predator if they were going near the, the pen to try and get in?
Yeah, I believe we actually do have a motion-detecting light back there. It's not working.
I was going to say, you have motion lights back there.
It hasn't worked, it hasn't worked since we moved in, so, but we could get that fixed.
Well, you were talking about having electrician run a wire out to the pen. Maybe you could set something permanently up on a, on a post that's right there so that if someone, yourself included, went out there, the lights would come on, and you wouldn't stumble... stumble across a predator trying to get in. It would automatically happen for you. And they do offer screeching devices that will automatically sense a movement, you know, and you could set that to go off in the evenings or specific times when you're not out there, depending on if it's not too loud to disturb the neighbors.
So how do you stop the chickens from setting that off if they're moving around out there?
Well, they'd be in their coop at night.
So you would just have a timer, so it would only be on after the chickens are...
From dark to dawn.
Yeah.
In the coop. That, that sounds like a good idea.
Right. The answer to your question is you'd set the motion detector away from the pen so it's not looking at the pen. It's, you know, the contents of the pen is looking out to the wood line, which would be whatever predictable path.
Yeah. But, you know, neither for nor against the application yet. I'd like to make a comment that we all live in a rural area here, or semi-rural, depending on what part of town you live in. And where I am, I don't have chickens. My neighbors don't have chickens. But we have coyotes. We have turkeys galore. We have never sighted a bear, but there were scat, definitely looked like bear scat out there. So we're all in the same situation as, with regard to wildlife. It's just a part of what we have out here. And I, I don't think the chickens are going to bring more or less wildlife than you already have. That's my feeling anyway. How you deal with that with your children, if something should happen, is totally up to you. But denying an application or modifying something because of a fear of increasing predators, I don't think is warranted in this particular area because we have them anyway. It could happen whether you have chickens or not.
True.
The, the motion detector sounds like a great idea if you're willing to get into that for your own, like, like our building inspector said, for your own protection. If you're going out there to check on the chickens and there's somebody out there you don't want to meet, it's better to know before you're out there. So that may be a big help for all concerned. Okay? So it's something to think about.
I mean, do you have, there are people who feel strongly about things like light pollution and certainly if there were noises that were going to be made by some device or something might have an objection to that. Do you have an opinion?
I, now I have a sense of where the coop would be.
Right.
And if the power's coming from the house, it's probably going to, it would probably shine north of, up, up north of Shingle House Road. And I'm, there's Laura's house right there. I'm on, I'm on the south side. So anything that would kind of blow up into the woods, and like you said, our next neighbor up from Laura is got a considerable distance, so I don't have a problem with that.
Okay. Okay. Thank you very much. Thanks for your comments.
You'd be okay with having a condition that required you to install a motion detector light?
Yeah, I, I think we could do that. I mean, we already have one, and we talked about how we need to get it fixed anyway because there is one back there. But, but yeah, we could, that would definitely work.
And I don't know about the noise thing, even had a...
It would be best just to start with the light and see if we have a problem, and then look at other options afterwards.
Are we okay?
The, the motion detector would be on your house, or would it be on the, the enclosure of the...
Um, well, I know that we already have one on the house, and it would shine right into where the coop.
It's close enough?
Yes, it's close, yeah. It's, yeah.
There's no one else who wishes to speak to this application? I move that we close the public hearing.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Would you like to make a motion? I'll make a motion. I move that the Bondur application for a, what is the amount of the variance that we're...
Forty-five feet.
Forty-five?
Forty-five feet.
Forty-five feet. For a front yard variance, for the installation of the chicken coop, be approved for the following reasons.
Also replacement in the front yard.
Replacement in the front yard. The applicant has been thoughtful about the location of the chip, chicken coop and the run. She has taken into consideration her closest neighbors and the impact upon them. This will not create an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood. Benefit cannot be sought through other methods or means. The variance, though substantial, again, has taken into account an appropriate location. The proposed variance will not have an adverse impact on the physical environment. The variance is self-created. I think we will require that you install or make operable, a motion detector light that will act as a deterrent for animals that may be attracted to the coop and its contents. Mr. Chairman? Yep, sure.
There is also the placement of the chicken coop in the front yard is the second part of this request.
Okay.
It's associated with the front yard variance under sixty dash four ten N five A. Chicken coops are not permitted in, in a front yard.
Front yard, okay.
So we also need to...
So in addition, in addition to the variance of the forty-five feet.
Right.
There's also the...
That it be allowed in the front yard and that it be allowed within the front yard setback as well.
Okay.
Given that this front yard is, has a different, I think that was meant for a different situation where your front yard was facing the, the actual, you know, facing another home, I guess.
I'm sorry. Right. No roosters?
We just checked. Roosters are not allowed under the code anyway.
I didn't think they were either, but I...
They are not allowed, so.
Better to be safe than sorry. They may change the code someday.
No roosters will be permitted. You'll, you'll have six months to start, one year to complete your installation. Is there anything as far as a survey?
We do not need a survey because it's such a portable structure. It may not live that long in that location.
Right, okay. For these reasons, I think we should approve the application.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Happy variance.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Di Martino?
Hey, good evening, good evening. My name is Jason Drake. I'm the general contractor for Mr. Di Martino. We're at two-two-four Byron Lake Road. I was before this committee in September for a generator variance, which was approved. Since then, the generator did not exactly end up in that exact location for a couple of reasons, and I'm here for that reason. And I'm sorry, I don't remember the numbers, and I'm just going to say further away and closer back. And we ended up being much closer or more conforming to the property on the rear setback. Between the rock ledge and the requirements to have the propane tank and the generator ten feet away, we ended up a foot over on the side setback, which also in my estimation is kind of subjective because I feel like I'm still in the rear yard setback because it's right in the corner there. Again, the Bozskis have about a hundred acres behind us and a hundred acres to the driveway side of the house. I do apologize. It is one hundred percent my fault that this got done and installed that way. So I'm asking for a side yard variance at this point that encroaches about a foot closer than it should.
When you say a foot?
It's actually three feet.
Three feet.
Yeah, I was going to question that one foot because I don't have one foot on my paper. Three feet.
When we scaled it, it was, it looked like a foot, and then when we calculated it, it was three feet.
There isn't on the survey.
So it ends up right here. We're behind their existing garage, space here, and then there's the side as well, so.
So you don't delineate where it is on the...
Look where it is now, because you know, and here's, you know, only do not conform because the existing garage is on the setback.
We got flipped. Propane tanks don't need it of variance. The generator did.
There it is. So is that, is this the actual location?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
He needed forty-two, he needed forty-five.
That's three feet.
So he didn't use...
That's forty-six, eight, and forty-two, seven, and it should be...
Which is not bigger than...
What?
What?
What was it approved for?
No, it was approved for a rear yard setback. Because of, you know, the site conditions
and codes, I ended up being three feet on the side yard side, encroaching on the side yard setback as well.
You get one, two, slide and rear? The original variance is given to him, which is still applicable, and then he needs another variance because he got three feet closer to the side yard. He's at forty-two feet now with the generator, where he should have been at forty-five feet. So he has one additional variance. He got one for twenty-three feet for the rear yard previously. Now he's within the front yard, and he needs a three foot for the front yard.
It says forty-two, seven, but you were saying three.
Yeah.
And what was the, the reason that it was misplaced? I missed that part.
We ended up hitting rock ledge, where the, where I was approved, we hit rock ledge.
Yeah.
It was not a great place to run the propane lines. Really needs to be in clean fill. It's not really supposed to be buried in rock. And it was also hard to level the generator pad. And then we had to meet the ten-foot requirement between the propane tank and the generator. So it just, it got pushed to that side yard further than it should have been.
And you realized that at the time, you knocked out?
I was, and I came in with this application, or I think with the generator permit, and I said, listen, I could try to pretend I didn't know about this, but this is where I ended up. I thought I was a lot closer than I was. And ultimately, I should have really had everything staked out originally for the owner, for myself, for the subcontractors, regardless of, even before the variant, the first variants. Just helps me a lot better. You know, I'm standing there with ten guys. I've been waiting weeks between a variance, the electricians screaming, I haven't paid a deposit on the generator. I was like, guys, we're going to put it here. We'll move it over. I think we're okay. We're going to find out at the survey.
The applicant came in with the survey and brought it to our attention that he had a problem.
Okay.
Nothing else has changed?
No, sir.
From the first application?
No, sir. That, well, in all fairness, and I forget the numbers. I might have been allowed thirty feet, but I only took twenty feet on the rear, the rear setback. I did not take as much as was granted.
You got a twenty-three foot variance initially.
Mr. Reed, you don't want to comment on this, do you?
No, thank you.
Okay.
Your contractor's not here, is he?
No.
I'll give you my card later.
Everything has to be the better, not the...
I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd make a motion that we approve the application.
I'll make a motion that the application, Charles Di Martino, for a three-foot side yard variance for replacement of a generator, be approved for the following reasons. The applicant was before us in, when was this, September?
The September hearing, sir. Yes, sir.
September, and was granted a variance for the installation of this same generator. During the installation process, the contractor encountered unexpected rock ledge, which prevented him from placing the generator in the, originally anticipated location, and also created a problem with the fuel line installation, and took it on himself to move the generator to a more likely spot that would not have these problems. The applicant or, and/or his contractor did not try to hide this fact. They came to the town with their problem of having to deviate from the original, the original variance granted, and due to the conditions of the site, there was nothing else to do. The granting of this variance will not create an undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood. There is really no other method to achieve this end due to the rock ledge and the other site conditions. It's not a substantial request in this particular instance. There's no adverse effect to the physical environment. There is no neighbors in opposition to this request. While this is a self-created hardship, the benefit to the applicant is far away by any perceived detriment to the town or to the neighborhood. And are you surveyed okay on this? Do you need another measurement, Tom, or are we okay?
I believe we're okay.
Okay.
It's located on, on the survey at forty-two feet.
We do not need, we do not need another final survey. The building department will accept your current measurements, and for those reasons, we should grant.
Thank you.
All those in favor? Oh, I second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Happy variance.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thanks, Tom. I move that we adopt the meeting minutes for the January thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen meeting.
I second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're off.